And only mode.
All right. Good evening. It's six o'clock and we are here to discuss our strategic plan for twenty, hold on, my mic was running there, my speaker, 2022 through 2024, the planning work session. This is our phase one, our review. Just before we get started, just I was informed that there's a possibility that we have to be off right at like eight o'clock. They're going to be doing some server maintenance issues or something. Is that correct Sylvia? Okay, so just kind of keep that in mind as we get moving here and try to keep questions and comments and things like that succinct and to the point and same with staff and those things. So also that remember this is just a review tonight of where we are, what we've been doing. This is going to be kind of a pretty long process, but not as long as it could have been. And we're going to let John kind of take that and kind of just really go through what we decided how we want to take, take this on and move forward. So with that, I think, who am I giving it to? Scott? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, oh, sorry, turn it on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate the opportunity, just to give a few words as we kickstart this. Back in 2008, the City of Fountain did its very first strategic plan ever. And that was a, that was a really big move for the city. It really got us thinking about the future and thinking about how to plan that out. But the challenge with that strategic plan is it, it had a lot in it. And so what we learned is with a strategic plan that has that many focal points and that many priorities, it's hard to put a lot of focus on very specific priorities. It really had the laser focus that we needed. And so while we use that for a number of years in two thousand, well, really three years ago, we really made a tectonic shift in the, in the approach to really narrow down our strategic focus, focus so that right now we have four priorities and and really that's allowed us to, and those priorities each have objectives underneath them, but that's really allowed us to put a lot of focus and energy and effort into those specific priorities and really achieved some pretty great things. So we're excited to start this next planning process for round two, iteration two of this strategic planning model. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to John and he's going to walk us through the process and where we go next.
Hold on real quick. I should have started with, we do have all council members present other than Ms. Duncan. She did let us know that she, she's actually traveling back from Denver, I guess. And so she's trying to get somewhere to a point where she can hopefully get on virtually. Otherwise, I did talk with her about getting with John and whoever else. If it's after the fact and she wants to listen to the tape tonight as well. Those of you who are on as far as public, if you have questions, just go ahead and raise your hand there. As we go through this, there'll be time and there'll be time available to ask any questions as we get through the different subject areas tonight. So we do have a couple of people online as, as guests from the public. So, okay, John, sorry about that.
No problem, Mayor. So good evening, Mayor, City Council and members of the public. And welcome to this phase one, the beginning of the year-long strategic planning process, which will lead us to a new and updated strategic plan for the City of Fountain for years 2022 through 2024. So just some housekeeping admin stuff before we get started. I would ask that if you're not speaking, you've got, there's mics around the tables. Make sure that the mics are switched off. That just helps with the video feed and those are listening to us virtually. For staff, when you come up to brief, you can move up to the mic there where Christie is right now. It would kind of be your briefing, your briefing station. Those of you who sent me slides, we have those queued up, so we'll be able to pull those slides up when your, when your time is ready. So. So about the review, you can see the little quote that I put there. I tried to look for something interesting. My daughter's been reading The Hobbit and so got kind of an interesting way to think about that. There's a lot of meaning there. And for the sake of this session, this is what we're trying to do is identify the dragons. Right? What dragons do we have living next door? So we can be sure that we include them. We include these things in our thought process and our calculations as we determine our strategic priorities for the next four years. So you know, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Yolanda for a moment, who's going to go over the kind of rules of the road and the procedures for our online guests.
Okay, thank you, John. For those online, for your instructions for tonight, you are in the go-to webinar and you will see these four buttons. And if you click the yellow button arrow, it will open up your interface. All attendees' microphones are muted. There are two ways to communicate with the city council. Number one, you may raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. Number two is to type a question in the question pane in the attendee interface. If you are not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. How to raise your hand? Click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. A member of the staff will call on you by name, the name that you registered and will unmute you. How to ask a question in the question pane? In the attending pane, type a question to the city council or staff members. Staff members will read the questions out loud and direct to the appropriate party. If question pane is not visible, click on the orange arrow to open up the attendee pane.
Okay, thanks for that, Yolanda. And if there are any initial questions, we'll go ahead and we'll just jump right in. So I wanted to begin this evening by just kind of reviewing the City of Fountain strategic plan timeline and kind of the way all this works. Council, you're pretty familiar with this, but for those who are, are joining us virtually and, and this will be recorded as well, so they can review the process here. We're here at this, let's start here at the end of the current strategy period, the strategy 2019 to 2021. Simultaneously, we're going to be starting the strategy planning phase for our next strategy, which will then at the end of this year will publish strategy 2022 to 24, which will transition us into a new three-year implementation iteration with accountability processes built throughout. So just a quick review to four-year cycle. Accountability and review is built into the process and it's synchronized with our two-year budget cycle. Okay, so this is the model of how we're going to get to our next strategy. City Council, you approved this model during the January offsite. This is a streamlined planning model due to council's decision to take the current strategy and essentially update it. So you decided to keep the current vision statement and update the current priorities and objectives. So this model then will still occur over a year. Still has four phases, but it will be a little bit faster than the experience we had back in 2018. This evening, we're right here, March 21, with the review. The review endeavors to look at the previous strategy where we're at today, review current conditions, trends and projections, and really give everybody a common picture, a common understanding of how we perceive the community fountain, the municipality today and over the next four years through, through 2024. So that's where we're looking at is just to understand ourselves right now and what the projections are in the next couple of years to then inform councils and the public's decisions and input for the next strategy. So tonight, it's very important and the mayor mentioned, you know, kind of staying on time. Tonight, our, our job here is just to lay out the questions, is to identify the problems, the issues and the challenges. Tonight is not for coming up with the solutions. It's not for determining what the priorities are going to be. That's going to be for the next session during update. So kind of keep that in, you know, as you're thinking about our discussion tonight, it's about learning and better understanding the conditions in Fountain right now and what we, where we think they're going to be in the coming years. And then we'll just table the decisions about what we want to do about that for the next session. This. Remote. Come on. There it goes. Oh. Yeah. Yeah, there it is. It's, we're done. Okay. Also wanted to just take a moment to review the vision statement and enduring interests. So council decided again in the offsite that we were not going to make any changes to the city's vision statement and enduring interest. So this is very important because the, the vision statement, this is the cornerstone of our strategy. Right? The strategy just enables the vision. The vision's where we want to be as a community. So in all of our discussion throughout the strategic planning process, we'll always come back to this vision statement and these enduring interests. And if anything we discuss is outside of the vision statement and enduring interest, we should really question why we're discussing. Because this is what it's all about right here. So if you take away one slide tonight, you take home and I printed them out and gave them to the council and I've got some extra copies. Take this one with you and, and think about this one and keep going back through it during the strategic planning process. Okay, just a quick review of our current strategy, 2019 to 2021. We did this in January in detail, so it's going to be very fast. Just some quick facts, we published it in February of 2019. Council selected four strategic priorities to focus on. They developed a strategy that was simple, focused and accountable. There were 23 objectives identified over the course of the last three years. It originally was 17 and there was a couple added on. Thirteen of those have been accomplished as of today and the remainder are, are on track or are indicated now to, to be completed by the end of 2021, the end of this strategy period. To behind me here, I've got on the board and I have in the next couple of slides, which I'm just going to move through very quickly. Each of those strategic priorities and the objectives that go along with them with the corresponding stoplight charts that council that you're used to, just to let you know where they're at. But there's really just wanted to have these available for the public so that they can look at this if they're not familiar. And if you want to review them or look at them, we got them up here in the room as well. And these do reflect the most recent changes that we, that we made to like recreation, for instance. Okay, so pending any questions from councilor or anybody regarding kind of what we're here to do today, what is the strategic planning model? What's that look like? Our vision statement? And our enduring interests and the current strategy? Pending any questions, Mayor, we can move on with the staff.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. I do want to make note that Councilwoman Duncan is on now as well. So we have all council either here or virtual. So for staff in case something comes up, but if, yeah, I don't see any questions right now at this point. So let's move into it.
So our first briefing will be Mr. Todd Evans. We'll talk about development and going on here in Fountain from a expansion perspective.
She's going to go over the findings that we've got currently under construction and I'll move forward with the conceptual and kind of the future of what we're looking at with development. So Christie, where's yours?
Thank you. Christie Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. John, can I borrow your pointer? So as Todd mentioned, I'm going to kind of just briefly talk about the projects and developments that are either under construction or ready to be approved and at which point then Todd will kind of take over some of the conceptual items that are still in the concept phase or in the early discussions. So the first one I'd like to talk about is the Singer Ranch, also known as Core Ballast, which is kind of located at the far northern and, or northern boundaries. They're looking at about 1,800 residential units with about 35 acres of commercial. They're currently going through their entitlement process. This land was annexed into the city in the eighties and has sat vacant until right about now when the economy and the development community are really seeing the growth kind of heading towards the southern boundaries rather than the northern portions of El Paso County. The next item is the Riverbend Development, which is at the northwestern side of our city limits along Highway 85. We've been working with the developers who are based out of New York to bring their commercial development to fruition. This is the former location of the Fountain Valley Shopping Center, which was built in the late sixties, I believe, which just kind of had, was run down, had a lot of mechanical and HVAC issues that it was ultimately determined by the property owners to raise the building and start from scratch to do a redevelopment of that commercial center. We've been working with them for several months now, I think six to nine months to bring their development to fruition. They've run into some issues with the county because their detention ponds and some offsite locations are actually located within El Paso County, which needed to receive approvals through El Paso County Board of County Commissioners before the city could make any type of formal approval actions and have them get going. But while all of that was going through the county processes, city staff was working in the background to get all of their plans approved. So once they received that approval, that they were able to hit the ground running. The next item is the Mesa Ridge Crossing. So if anybody has been along Mesa Ridge Parkway, Highway 16 in Syracuse, which is right near the Mesa Ridge High School. You've been seeing a lot of earthwork and some road construction in that area that's associated with that 35 acre commercial development. They have a couple of pad sites that are planned for and going through their formal approval processes. One is which is the Maverick Convenience Store. There's a discount tire. There's a quick quack car wash. And then recently we received the plans for a Dutch Bros Coffee Shop in that location as well. So it's definitely a high-profile area that we are anticipating additional commercial development in that area, especially with the La Sardi land that Kimberly with Economic Development has been working very closely on some of those infill commercial areas. One of the newer residential sort, residential type of developments that we've seen within our community is an active senior living known as the Villas at Mesa Ridge and which is located on the northern side of Cross Creek Avenue, just to the east of the Mesa Ridge Shopping Center. Markets at Mesa Ridge Shopping Center where Safeway is located. If you've been in that area recently, they have the elevator shafts erected and then they've been working in the early this week on getting the framing and the trusses started on the first floor of the, of the structure there. So that's about 60 units. We don't have any type of a senior living, active, senior living residential units in, in our community. So this is definitely a new variety of housing that opens up some opportunities for those who are looking to transition from their current living situations into other units that may better fit their lifestyle. And then the last one is at the southern end of the community within Ventana. Their first six filings of Ventana, which started in 2015, has been built out. So Ventana is located along Old Pueblo Road, north of Link Road, right in this area. Their first phase had about 380 residential units, which has been fully built out and they're currently working with staff to bring in additional residential land on their southern boundary with some commercial along Old Pueblo Road. So those are the active developments that are currently going through our processes and getting their approvals or already under construction. So with that, I will toss it back to Todd to talk about the conceptual and discussion items that we've had and some of the hurdles that we're facing with this influx of growth interest.
Thank you, Christie. Any questions for Christie on any of those active projects that she spoke about? Great job. That means a great presentation. Thank you. So let's take a look at everything else that we've got up here. And as you can see, what you're seeing in, in the purple, with the purple marks there is, are things that have been in the conceptual stages or have already been annexed into the city? And when I say that, I just want to make sure everybody understands the processes that anytime someone approaches the city and they want to do any type of a project, we put them through what's called a DRT meeting or a development review team meeting. And at that meeting, they will come in and that's their chance to have almost every city department that's sitting at the table or outside departments such as Black Hills and those type of things. And they're able to get answers about services for that application. So that would be someone who wants to open a small coffee shop along 8587 or some of the larger proposals such as a La Plata. So we have been going through those processes all the way back. If you can go back up to the north a little bit, Yolanda. I'm going to point out Kane Ranch as, as she passes through there. Kane Ranch has been annexed into the city since oh seven, oh eight as well as Almagre is as well. And Christie just mentioned how long Singer Ranch has been sitting up there and annexed into the city since the eighties. So when, when maps like this will go out into the public, everybody kind of gets that perception, oh no, here it comes. It's imperative. It's, it's going to hit our doorsteps in a year or two. And in reality, that just doesn't occur. Almagre, I'll use as an example up here, a proposed 1,866 units. And I think there's about 17 acres of commercial right along Mark Shuffle. That has been on and off our, our radar. In my five years in this position, I think we've talked to them three times with three different project managers. There's, there's disagreements sometimes between the owners of when they want to develop and if they're going to develop. So that's something that we'll sit down in that DRT meeting and they may have approached us four years ago and now when they come and approach us now, they want to start turning dirt as quickly as they possibly can. But we have to say, slow down. We have to take you back through that process so that everybody can sit at the table and see if you can be serviced or not. So I take that and a big project that we've been talking about has been La Plata. That's been discussed for a number of months and they've been going through those processes. Well, about a few weeks ago, as Christie mentioned, a huge hurdle hit that they possibly will not, well, we know at this point, they won't be able to be served with the water as they would like. They would like as many guaranteed taps as they could possibly get. And at that point, water came forward and said there were some assumptions that were made. And Dan's going to get into these specifics later on for you in the questions and answers. But basically, we had to put that on hold because we've made a commitment to the community that we won't bring new development in and put it on the backs of our current ratepayers. So those developers are going to have to pay for those type of improvements. And some of them are used to kind of a plug and play situation in Colorado Springs where it's going to be very different down here. So La Plata right now is in a, on a permanent hold as well as the other developments that you see in purple. Dan's going to explain to you as we go through tonight that they're doing a new modeling for the city and they're going to see how many available taps we have, how they should be parceled out. And then we will sit down and we will figure out how we can move forward with which developments. So as we, I'll, I'll, let me, let me get, finish my groove and then I'll, I'll come back. Yeah, but so when you see these things, as we will continue to work with these folks, it will all depend on what utilities can service them. And that is going to be a constraint on how much of this proposed development is going to be coming in. But I want to repeat that a lot of these have been on the books for many years and we have seen, as Christie said, this influx, as you all are aware, that everybody with all the growth that's going on in our region, now they all want to hit it and they want to hit it hard and they want to hit it fast. But we're going to be constrained on what we can serve with utilities and we're okay with that. We're fine moving slow and we're fine making good decisions and making sure that it doesn't fall back on the ratepayers. Now, we would prefer we were able to give them their answers as soon as they approach us. So when, when we're not able to do that, we're going to admit we can't do that and we'll sit back. And if they want to have patience with us, they will. If they don't, we can't control that. So as we move forward tonight, that's going to impact several of the presentations that you're going to get. It's going to impact Sylvia's because we can't right now project what our growth is going to be. We can't put a good specific plan together because we don't know until we get some more answers from utilities, how we can do that and how we can move forward. So with that being said, you all are familiar, I think, with everything that we've got up there and kind of what we've been approached with. One that Christie didn't mention that I've seen, we have had activity on this week that we all want to see that activity is the Fountain Village Townhomes right down here on Ohio Street. Christie's been working with them to get them going diligently for the last few weeks and I see that the contractors out there moving dirt on that. So we're very happy to see that one in progress as well. Councilman Applegate, you had a question? So what happens in this process is the first thing that they've talked to us and we've talked conceptually about that. They actually applied for annexation for their phase one, which is basically the 500 acres right here off of Link Road, Lincoln Scroll Creek. They did that at the beginning of December, I think it was, Christie. So then that really starts the clock and that's when you have to sit down and we have to start having those hard conversations. And how this is how that kind of came up with, with utilities. So when they sat down and we're finding out what the capacities were for the water veins in Link Road, that's when it was discussed about capacities, available taps and those things. So they are not annexed into the city. We had not done that officially. So none of the La Plata conceptual plans have been annexed into the city yet. But.
What about the Singer Ranch? Is that?
Good question.
Oh, is it, did we de-annex them or did?
No. So they're, they are still in the city. We didn't de-annex them. So they are moving forward. And when you talk about the utility side of things, Carl's working with them on the electric side, but they are in the Widefield Water District. So they'll be served by Widefield Water. And as we understand, they have the capacity and they're fine. And that Widefield Water District kind of runs right along CNS, out Mark Shuffle and then cuts off down Peaceful Valley. So that northern piece up there to include the Norwood piece here, those in Singer Ranch are in the Widefield Water District. Apple Tree and Almagre are not. So Singer Ranch can move forward. The south side. Yeah, the south side is. Yep. Yep. What are the questions? Those are great questions. So it, it's kind of shortened my presentation tonight because there's no reason for us to present on things right now that we're putting on hold. Go ahead, Sharon.
If Almagre cannot do the water and they decide to stay in the county, is there a way to service them through the, through Whitefield if they stay in the county? Or they just have to come into Fountain to be serviced by us? That's just it?
You said Almagre, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I meant.
La Plata?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah. And see, that's one thing that, that landowners will do. If we can't service them, they will look for any other entity that can. So in the county, they're going to have the same issue is because in the county, they don't have a water district per se, a county overall water district. So they have to find the water and bring that with them in the county, which in this area again could be difficult. But could they develop out in the county? They could if they can find a water service to service them or water districts to service them.
So either way, they're going to have to find their own, find a way to get water. Okay.
Right. These are great questions. Anything else? And Dan is going to get into more of the specifics later on.
Yeah, I just, I think it's important to note that and you said at the beginning, someone said at the beginning that, that, I mean, we can move forward with this and then really burden our current taxes or current ratepayers.
Correct.
But you know, what's the downfall on that? It's everything. And we, you know, I ran on this platform of smart growth and smart development and that would be one of the most unsmart things that we could do if we did that. And so I, you know, it's, it's, it's like, like our neighbors of the north where you, in recent last couple of weeks where developers are coming in and putting in, in developments and they don't have the water to, to to fill that. And then the residents are upset because, and the ratepayers are upset because, so you're going to put me on water restrictions, but you're going to allow 500 homes. And so I think this is where, one of those times that we're being very thoughtful in our, in our planning and, and you know, when, when, when those criticisms come up that, you know, we're just in developer pockets. This is one of those times that I, I don't think very many developers are very happy with us, but at the same time, we've got to protect what we have and who we are, owe our service to currently, not, not, you know, future things. So it's a difficult conversation they've been having, but at the same time, it's better to tell them now than it is. You know, a couple of years down the road and like they're, they're knee deep in all things. So
Absolutely.
I do have a question here. And, oh, it's from Mr. Rick. We still owe 50 million in water bonds and 12 million in electric. So I'll let Dan talk more about that. But yeah, I mean, there's just a lot of things that we still have to worry about and, and take care of. So thanks for that. I'm not seeing any other questions at this point.
And I guess, Mayor, before I turn it over. And I guess mayor, before I turn it over to Chris is, okay, and, and I'll just summarize to everybody, when they see these maps again, they, their first impression is, oh, my goodness, we're, we're growing and we're growing so fast. But as the mayor said, there is limitations out there. Um, we'll continue to show this as this is the future. It meets our master plan. Um, but there's things that will slow it down. Scott?
Thank you. Um, we wanted to make sure that we started this conversation off with development, with development planning folks because so much of what they do and the challenges that they're dealing with right now are gonna, going to sort of trickle through virtually any kind of priority the council set. So when you look at our existing priorities, whether you're talking about transportation, telecommunications, recreation, public safety, think about the impacts of growth in any one of those areas. So it ends up being a constant theme that we just want you to think about. Our vision statement and enduring interest that we looked at briefly a minute ago, um, addressed that they, they talked to the issue of growth and how we want to responsibly address those sort of issues. Well, as we're dealing with public safety, as we're dealing with roads and, and all the impacts on roads, as we're dealing with water, I know we've right now just been talking about water, but virtually any sort of infrastructure, it's going to be really important for us to be very cautious and careful and thoughtful about how we do that. So that's why it was important to us to start this off with development. And so with that, hand it over to Chief.
A better? Okay. Well, uh, thank you, Todd, for leading off. I mean, I, I, I think certainly a theme tonight, you know, you would hear from, from all of us is the growth. We're all concerned about it. You know, when people ask me about, you know, what I, what I'm concerned about, uh, when I lay my head on pillow tonight is really how to, you know, keep our citizens safe and, and with the growth, when you look at that map of what was uh, projected, you know, it was daunting. You know, we're going to need more of everything in the city, specifically, you know, from my perspective, public safety, we need the firefighters and the police officers to go out there and, and keep our citizens safe. As Commander Lewis says, uh, you know, every day reminds our cop, they're our number one priority. Cops go home safe at night and our citizens are safe. So, you know, it's a good laid into, you know, overall, I, I think what we've done with the strategic plan that, that we created and staff and led over the last few years as a team and as city counselors and citizens that funded it, we know, we've done amazing work, you know, across the city, specifically in public safety. You know, overall today, I would say that when we started this plan and when we sit here today, the public safety departments have, have come a long way. Uh, you know, we were tasked with redistributing public safety resources across the city. Priority of effort to that really went for the third ambulance, right? That is now purchased. It's operational. We have partial staffing to have that up and we, we, we take that ambulance and we put it in service when we need to, when our calls for service become overwhelmed and we do it in a smart way. Um, we're, there's still a little bit of work to do on that and I'm going to turn it over to James, just really to, for him to highlight at the very end of this, some fire department, very centric things, but you know, we've been really proud to also remodel Fire Station Two, which was our oldest fire station and, you know, had, you know, we found out, had some things that weren't safe about it. So now we have a really classly done, you know, we toured it, uh, a couple of weeks ago with Scott. You know, it's come out great. I think many of you have seen it. Uh, it's a good facility. It's a, a safe facility and you know, our firefighter is going to perform well in a, in a better, more cohesive, uh, safe environment. Um, we have the ambulance that's across the tracks to provide services to, uh, us elder statesmen like, uh, me and Sam over there. You know, so we can have, you know, I live on the other side of the trackses too, you know, with my family. So that's always been a big concern for the citizens and, and we felt that that was very valid and we've done great progress. From the police standpoint, we really spent the last couple of years of fine tuning. You know, the, there's a lot of different models that talk about, you know, police forces, you know, there's a lot of, one of the data points you can look at is the number of police officers we have per capita that serve our citizens. Um, in last year's survey, if you remember, I think the town of Fountain was like the fifteenth safest city in all of Colorado. Um, it's statistics, but one thing that stood out to me is our, our per capita is one point six. It was in the lower third bottom tier twenty, you know, bottom twenty-five percent across the state. And when you take out the fact we have ten SROs, you know, that we partner with school district eight, it brings that number to one point four. And it's, it puts us right at the lower end across the state of how many police officers per our growing population. Now, that's a data point. Uh, we make up for that by being very agile and by utilizing technology. One of the tasks that we brought to you was we were going to establish a comstat, which is really intelligence-led policing, looking at all the data, scanning, figuring out where a crime is. I will always say that crime has a heartbeat. It has a heartbeat during the daytime, the swing shift and the midnight shift. And we do our best with our young leaders to predict where that crime will be and put, uh, as Commander Lewis says, cops on dots to be, uh, very reactive. So, you know, that's how we mitigate some of those things. Uh, we've also, I think this is good news. We made good progress to add a third traffic in the last couple of years, third traffic cop. Many of you, many of our citizens to include me, would say traffic is one of our bigger issues uh, in the city. And frankly, I agree. I, you know, we all drive on the same roads, whether it's aggressive driving, distracted driving. I always tell the story, when I'm trying to take my wife to church on a Sunday, I, I get the bird twice as I'm driving my, you know, uh, my, uh, vehicle, you know, for a mile to my house to Cross Creek Church. So, you know, it certainly impacts, uh, us. The Mesa is, is proven to always be very dangerous. It's one of the more dangerous stretches of the road that probably exists in El Paso County. And all traffic fatalities have been going up and we never want to lose one of our citizens in a traffic fatality if we could prevent it. So we now currently have the third traffic, uh, officer in, in service. And I'll be very happy to, uh, tell you by the end of May, we're going to rotate Don Kling, where Don Kling has done an absolute outstanding job uh, over at Jordal as an SRO for the elementary school. He is like the absolute picture book of community-based policing and he has helped so many of those kids and families. Um, we're going to rotate him back in the traffic team. It will bring our total team up to four. They'll be split, uh, across both sides of the week. So, you know, we'll have traffic coverage, a dedicated traffic cop eighteen hours a day, seven days a week in our city. So that will be good. And I hope that will voluntarily encourage people to slow down and make all of our jobs a little easier because I know we all deal with some of those complaints. And, and again, I would say they're valid. So on that, we're trying to do everything possible to alleviate, uh, some of, uh, that type of driving and encourage people to slow down and ticket when needed or as a last resort, right? It's not the first option. Voluntary compliance with the law is, uh, what we prefer. Uh, on the next issue, the comstat program has been, uh, going very well now for a number of years. It's one of the things we bring a lot of synergy to our police force. We brought Fort Carson, uh, out to visit Commander Lewis on our comstat meeting. And, uh, you know, these are the military police battalion commander, chief of police, uh, all of their staff came over, watched our comstat and they were absolutely amazed by the amount of buy-in our police sergeants have at their level and the amount of knowledge they have. Uh, what we have is an outstanding young crew of, uh, fantastic police officers that want to be police. I told them today in our staff call, and I think this applies to, to many of our departments. There's not a better place to be a police officer or firefighter than the city of Fountain. I would say that statement's true for the state of Colorado. I would say pretty much a fact. And that's because we have great citizens, we have a great city council and we have great people here. You know, James, I'll get to his, some of his successes in a minute, but James has been absolutely outstanding addition to our fire department and he has really taken it into the twenty-first century and will just continue to get good. Um, one of the things we're very focused on, on the, uh, the comstat is our reaction to our, our statistics, uh, to the intelligence and how we employ and then our assessment. We've updated that here recently to really focus on that. Uh, we'll see where that goes. I'll give you some updates. Obviously, you know, and I think I've been communicating with city council, uh, number one, crime is up in our, in our nation. Violent crime was up in the state of Colorado. I sent you the uniform crime report statistics. Some of our bigger metropolitan cities saw, you know, major crime and homicides jump as much as fifty percent. And those are pretty staggering, uh, numbers. Certainly that's been felt down here. Last year we were up in four of eight of our track statistics and you know, in the last thirty days, uh, this time last year in March, we had zero narcotics violations in our city. We had zero. And you see many of the reports I've sent to you, uh, this month in March, we just looked at in a day. We had thirty-two traffic, uh, narcotics violations and many of those were tied to also became weapons violations. So we had large, large, large amounts of drugs and guns, uh, thirty-two times taken off the streets in our community just in the month of March. So those numbers are, are staggering. When I look at it, uh, those numbers are alarming. Um, most of it is transient people that are transient through our, our kids are stopping on, on PC for traffic stops, which is great. Officer-initiated activity and they're being very proactive and, you know, our encouragement is to guard our citizens and our perimeter uh, very aggressively and doing policing the right way and encourage people to stay in the Springs, go in the county or go down to Pueblo. So, you know, we're going to continue to do that and, and provide that blanket of safety. Uh, one thing that we're very, very close to doing and, and we all supported and got on, got on board with this about a year ago was our beacon team and our, our mental health first responder, uh, co-responder model. Uh, we, uh, I'm proud to report I sent in the resume of the person that we had finally apply. She has turned out to absolutely be fantastic. We've done the, uh, oral board interview that we participated on. Um, we are going to do a ride along with her tomorrow in El Paso County with the beacon team that's up there. The next phase of that is we'll do her background. We'll assign her her uniforms. She'll go through four weeks of training. And we hope to have her partnered with us by the end of May here in our city. So that, uh, you know, I don't think that's going to do enough, uh, good. Talked a little bit about the beacon in terms of, uh, mental health for everybody, especially our citizens. You know, we had a couple of tragic events that I sent you some details on here recently, uh, specifically involving soldiers out of Fort Carson. And, and again, this beacon is the right tool for the right job. I, I think it's going to save lives and it's going to make, you know, uh, uh, safer and more compassionate to our citizens. Uh, over on the fire department side, I, I won't steal James's thumber, uh, thunder. He's very humble. He's not going to brag. James has done so many good things from ordering our new vehicle fleet of the future that will serve the citizens the next twenty-five years here, uh, replacing the outdated stuff, bringing in certifications, SOPs, his blue card program, reorganizing this year with your support and your approval, his, uh, his fire department, uh, promoting three battalion chiefs who have been outstanding leaders and all served, uh, here in the department for fifteen or twenty years each. So really the fire department is, is, is on track. Uh, there's a little bit to work to do to, uh, from the staffing model that we looked at. We knew the funds were tight last year. James has a pretty good plan really to look at. Um, one of the programs he initiated with Scott's help and his approval is, uh, is looking at, uh, a better way to facilitate money coming in from Medicaid. Uh, we do a lot of those, those calls and we have a company that's going to help us do that. And we think there's going to be some money available within the year that might help us go ahead and, uh, get that ambulance staffed, uh, full-time. Um, we have secured resources that are off of Link Road in the Aspen View, um, to build a combined public safety um, substation. Uh, our pledge to use since our departments work so well is, is we're going to continue to work together. Everything we'll do will be combined. We don't want to have the citizens having to do a separate police and fire things. Everything we'll look at will be a combined center and a, a combined way to do it. Of course, looking in the future, the challenges will be that. And I've talked about it for a few years is when we build it, then we're going to have to put some vehicles in it and we're going to have to have the firefighters and police officers to go in it. And you know, to me, if we don't really look at it that way, it doesn't make sense to build a building and then, you know, have, uh, me and James out there by ourselves because our departments, you know, kicked us into the new sub-center to get us out of the building. So that's something to keep on our radar. Obviously Todd's news, uh, with growth, I think in some ways allows us to plan for that and really to generate some income and, and be smart about that going forward. And again, I certainly realize that all of the city, um, you know, all the city part, uh, department heads and structures, you know, are many times understaffed and we all do, we all have needs and we all really do the best, you know, job we can with what we have. And, and that we'll continue to do that because that's the fountain way. And, uh, we have a lot of talented professionals that take great pride in our job. So we'll continue to get after it. The last thing I'll close with um, is, uh, I talked to a few of you. There's certainly a lot of bills going on, uh, this year up at the legislature. Obviously some of the bills, probably four, five, six, seven of them are very public safety, i.e. police heavy. Some of them, like the jail population management thing, the SRO bill and a couple of others are at, at, at times frightening for some of the impacts, uh, when we've had explosive crime rates that have went up in the state and violent crime is up and some of those bills are designed will make our citizens less safe. They'll make it harder for us to arrest people. They'll make it easier for people either not to go to jail or bond out or it's really going to continue to put limitations on us that we believe, uh, will be difficult. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for sending a letter on that bill. Um, that letter's been sent up, standing everyone's position. Sharon got us involved. I worked very hard with the reps, uh, at the state legislature that are doing the SRO bill, trying to make that better. And we'll just continue to stay engaged in that. And we're continuing to monitor those bills very closely. I sat in with C A C P. C A C P, the Chiefs of Police Association has been probably the leading organization to stand tall against those bills. Now, the Sheriff's Association, C M L, um, some other associations have really, um, you know, unfortunately, you know, from their side went neutral on some bills that, that maybe aren't in the best interest, but that'll sort itself out. Uh, Sheriff Elder, I talked to him last week. We talked about these bills. Him and a couple of Republican sheriffs are like the last sheriffs in the state really trying to stand up and really trying to do better with what the bills are. And, and he's definitely engaged on this one, uh, him and his staff and, and he had some good conversations with the bill writer and there were some recent amendments on the jail management, uh, bill that might be a little better. But I know Sam, we talked about it. The mayor's been involved in it, Sharon. And I just wanted to give you all a very quick update because unfortunately they're coming very fast this year and I think they are significant. So I, I just, you know, I communicated to all the chiefs of police today when I talked to them that our council and our citizens and our mayors really standing behind their positions and really willing to get their hands up and, uh, get dirty and do what they need to do. So thank you for that. So I hope that was brief enough. Todd, thank you for the good news. Uh, give us some time and space. And I'd just like to answer any questions and then have James come up here really just to highlight a couple of things. But again, I, I can't be more proud of where the fire department has came, uh, over the last two years. Um, they've just made huge leaps from safety equipment, SCBA's, extracting tools, certifications, qualifications. Uh, James has just done a fantastic job. And the morale, and I will say this, the morale is as high as I've ever seen at the fire department. Uh, many of you can go, I've gone over there and toured it and been around them. And you know, uh, the morale, the trust in the city, the trust within their fire chief, those, those things are as high as I've seen them in, you know, the five, six years that I've been here and been associated with the fire department. So, you know, I just really thank God for that. That's a good thing. So any questions?
I have one as far as the development is having to affect your SRO stuff.
As far as this development?
Yeah. So what about that law? Is that going to affect our SROs or yours?
The S R, the SRO bill?
Yeah.
So the, the nexus of the SRO bill, uh, number one, the X O, the SRO bill is has seventy-five percent of it right. And, and seventy-five percent of the bill looks like the partnership we have with District Eight. It basically tells and sets the groundwork for the school district to work with the police department through MOAs, hiring practices and discipline practices that represent all parties. Uh, that's what we've always done here, right? That's what we have a great relationship with District Eight. Sam, we have an M O U, Dr. Montana Romero. She sits in on all, all our oral boards and asks questions and she gets a vote for the SROs and she's very active. Uh, and we partner with our school principals and staff on all the school discipline things. And when I looked at the statistics that I sent to the legislature and only about, you know, out of a hundred cases, only about three of those cases that come to us for discipline, does it result in any level of law enforcement action taken? So in seventy percent of the time, we leave it in the hands of the school district, the counselors, they handle it. You know, ultimately I would just tell you, we, we do what's best for kids. We partner together and ultimately find the path of what's best, best for kids. Educators and cops think differently, but when we work together, we get to the right answer. So the scary part of the bill is the one that says basically, uh, no SRO, no cops can write, uh, take any law enforcement action at all whatsoever in the school. And we all feel like, um, that we will put our, our victims of sexual assault. Many of those are female, young female students. We would put, um, uh, you know, schools we have trespassed and we have, uh, we have trespassed individuals that have brought guns to school and made threats. Um, and it would have made us, uh, impossible to do some of those things. And that's not creating a safe environment for former victims or kids to be in the school and learn. So we're violently fighting that specific one in the SRO bill. I think we made some traction on the meeting I was at. We're waiting for the bill to come back and we take a look at it. So I'll, uh, I'll keep everyone updated, but we're working very hard for that. And the school district is right there with us. They, they equally, equally want to stay with the system that we have. Thank you. Nothing?
I think your team is going to be the model on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I think what, I think what you've put together and the school district has put together is, is going to be used as a model for this. So hats off to you guys because like you said, we're, we're doing it, you know, the right way as best we can. But, um, everybody else needs to get on board and make some changes to their procedures and, or we end up with bills like this that are just
Yes.
um, to the extreme. So, um, and I appreciate you really just kind of dropping everything and getting on this really quickly at the last minute because that's what it takes.
Yes.
Sometimes. So I really appreciate that and showing up with the statistics that they needed. So it's not just an opinion. So.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. I think that's a, a good roll up for, uh, public safety and police and specifically, you know, I'll just bring James up here to share a couple of things from his perspective.
All right. Well, good evening. Um, as Chief Heber said, we are, uh, cross-staffing the third ambulance that was part of the last uh, strategic plan. And what that means is that at our fire station three, you have your choice of a fire engine or an ambulance. If, if we need that ambulance, that fire engine just sits idle and, and vice versa. Um, but what we have set up is it's the last ambulance in the city. So it runs as an engine until we're out of ambulances and then through our dispatch system, that's what we're doing. We did not, um, we have three of the positions that we haven't filled from the last strategic plan just because of, of funds and actually. just because of, of funds. And actually that has turned out to be okay because when we stop going to motor vehicle accidents without injuries, that cut our call volume by about 700 calls a year. Saved us $12,000, um, dollars in fuel. Uh, just, it's just a better business practice. If it's unknown injuries and we don't know, we still go. But when people call and they clearly say, we are not hurt, we're sitting in the parking lot of a store and we just need the police to come. We're not going to those anymore. Um, unless they change otherwise, but that, that has made us about a 15% drop. So it's bought us more time till, you know, we can build, uh, the city further. Uh, and as Chief Heber, uh, mentioned, uh, something that, um, we've, we've done is we are looking really heavily at our revenues. I'm in the fire department and trying to, uh, fix that. And one of the things we did is we had a study commissioned on our ambulance service and looked at how much is the true cost of our ambulance transports? Was the cost of our personnel, our facilities? And we took everything and it's in a, sort of a pre-linguistic report uh, on what we're doing. Uh, but what we did from that is we were able to um, get a Medicaid Medicare reimbursement that is coming um, in, in October and that check should be in excess of $600,000, um, coming to our city. Um, if, if it goes according to plan, so that should help us in the future with additional needs that we have, um, going on with us. Um, I'm pleased to say that we do have a record number of applicants, um, for the fire department now. Um, for all of our positions. So I think that's a definitely a, a good thing for sure. And then as far as, um, Chief Heber mentioned, the public safety station number four over there on Link Road is where we have it identified right now. And I've worked with Lisa from our I T director in, you know, response times and making sure that that, that works well. And that seems to still work well, you know, you know, pending the developments that we have coming into the area as well. And I think the great thing is that if we put that in the latter part of this next plan, that our impact fees that you all passed, um, here in the last couple of months will help us greatly fund that public safety facility where it'll be for police and fire. And hopefully that gives us several years to build up that fund and, and add that station at that time. Um, and then the only other thing I really wanted to mention is, uh, just that we continue to follow that vehicle replacement plan that I published. In the next few years, we're mainly going to just, um, be taking the boxes off of our existing ambulances and sticking them on new chassis. Should be about a 40% savings over a whole new ambulance. So that'll help us out, uh, a little bit. And as we, as we go on and just updating that fleet and I'll update that plan, you know, probably in the next year or so for our, our fleet replacement. Um, and we also say thank you for fire station two in the last plan that has worked well. The individual sleeping rooms. Um, one other thing that is going to be outstanding in the next, you know, several years is this trying to figure out how we can do the same thing at fire station one and three, because we still have the big bay, uh, sleeping rooms. And whether we do two bunk rooms, um, or we go different bunk rooms, you know, it's something I think in the next few years that we need to try to figure out how to do. And there's, there should be a way I, I would think to do that. Uh, and with that, I'm, I'm glad to be here. It's been a great, uh, two years and, uh, is there any questions that I can answer for anybody? I'm sorry. Thank you for watching. Just kind of right straight across from Eagle Side while I'm in tree there. Okay. All right. Thank you.
She hasn't said anything yet.
It's like when you get that test, right? You can't flip over the page until it's exactly that time. Well, the time has arrived. Economic Development Urban Renewal, uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, Public in attendance tonight. Um, I did give you a brief two-page, four-page handout and I think you all under is, uh, bringing it up on the screen now. Um, I basically just wanted to show you where we, where I was four years ago when we presented, um, the first inaugural discussion on the strategic plan. Uh, Economic Development Urban Renewal was focused on connectivity and regeneration of his existing landmass development areas. Um, with that, FURA was focused on sense of place, blight removal. And E D C was focused on business activism and support channels. One of the biggest areas of concentration was the stigma and the, um, stifling of roads and transportation in our nexus. And I have to applaud, um, Public Works Deputy City Manager, Council, uh, really, you know, putting pen to paper and really addressing some of those concerns we had. Um, three of the five areas of significant concern for economic development have been updated and improved. It's awesome. And the other two are still in the pipeline, uh, to still continue that funding and due diligence of improvement. So awesome work on that. I also want to make sure that we look back at our, uh, master plans that we've done. A lot of times the, the perception is those plans get done. And then they sit on the table and collect us for the next 10 years. I am pleased to say that since 2008, uh, Urban Renewal has remediated efforts on 18 properties in our corridors. In 2014, Old Town Revitalization Plan has, uh, implemented 12 of the measures recommended in that, in that plan itself. 2018, uh, T H K Design Aesthetics Program has applied, five of those elements have been adopted and applied to the landscape. And then as recently as last year, under the placemaking effort, four of those, um, particular areas of symbolic activities have already transpired out of that plan. So we are actively chipping away and I have to stress patience, people. Um, success comes with planning and tactical strategies and adapting these plans to those models. Um, and we are making significant progression in that area. So where are we today? It's 2021. We are on the other side, hopefully of COVID, but we have a long economic recovery to assess during this timeframe ahead. Um, and it does correlate with the next four years of the strategic plan. So the areas that economic development is focusing on is business climate policy, equitable access to services and jobs. Infrastructure is key and we've already heard infrastructure already in the first 30 minutes of this discussion. Workforce upskilling and wage attainment as well as commercial vacancy and blight. So, um, thankfully we are in a position where we do not have a lot of office space. And that is the sector that is really, um, in turmoil coming out of COVID. So we are in a very thankful position. But we do have businesses that have not been able to steer the headwinds of COVID and we are going to see some of that vacancy occur throughout our landscape. So before we go forward any further, we do have to look at what are our conditions of state, uh, to work with going forward. So I basically categorized them in three areas. You're positive or extremely strong. So development standards, zoning, overlay districts. Transportation master plan is underway with the Public Works Team. Uh, defined business cores and actively advocating for land use preservation um, is key. And then our reputable city and valley is on the rise. I can't tell you how many awards, how many accolades from public service to the community's budget management process. A lot, a lot of recognition is coming on, on our behalf and it's extremely positive in regards to gardening, um, correlated agency support, gardening, grant funding support. Things are really working in our favor in these areas. Areas of a transitional state, but they're in a positive transitional state. That includes Old Town District itself where we are sitting tonight. Um, it's a very risk adverse investment area. Um, as of two years ago, Peaks and Pines Brewing Operation was the first commercial entity to invest in over 25 years. That's a significant statement, uh, to this particular core. Um, you also have a sense of place and accessibility. So we are working on that master plan of urban space. What does that mean? How do you access it? How do you utilize it from that perspective? Um, placemaking is, um, a multi-department effort. So I am very pleased to share that we are working with utilities, um, planning, Public Works, uh, P D, um, code compliance and really addressing from a collaborative approach, some of the addressments that need to be managed going forward. Uh, and then the last two, I would say health and wellness is significant. We just had our first El Paso County Public Resource Center open, which is fabulous. And I know that's a lot of headwork, uh, and effort lifting from our deputy city manager. Thank you very much for that, sir. And then we also have the Community Rec Center Discussion, which has been very active with council and the public. And these are all, all tremendous transitional benefits for our community from an economic perspective. Lastly, I would say city communication channels and engagement is extremely positive as well in that transitional turnover. Um, and it helps a lot from an economic development world because it's kind of a hard pill to swallow if you're not living and breathing economic development every day. So it helps to make that communication, uh, more transparent. So some of the areas we do need to see more improvement on from our perspective is, um, the perception image from the developer industry. We are still working with a very old perception that Fountain is not collaborative. Fountain is not willing to abate or work with me on some things. And I have to say, I sit in numerous prospecting meetings and that's like the number three topic that comes up multiple times. So we are still, still, still chipping away at that and, um, some of that messaging on the, and engagement and communications will help us along the way. Sustainability development metrics. Todd opened that up with that tonight. How are we managing our, our natural resources and having to do that service? So we're really working on that as well. Um, right size developments and events is key. Um, there's been numerous examples, uh, throughout our region and our state where a community just opened it up itself and then it got cannibalized. And that's not what you want your community to experience, uh, from an economic perspective. Um, and then we've talked about utility capacity. So I'm not going to go harbor on that. Dan, um, and Carl will definitely get into that tonight. So how do you plug in to support where economic development is working? Uh, and I wanted to give you some areas of consideration. So Tabor exemption revenues is very keen if you adopt uh, economic development policies going forward. So as we are seeing more revenues increasing, um, we were the beneficiary of COVID because a lot of online sales then generated more uptick in our revenues, right? But the other side of that is then you're reaching those tipping points and you may have to give a lot of that revenue back, unfortunately. So economic development is one of those, uh, safe harbor areas. So if those revenues are applied through that channel, then they don't have to go back and they can be put towards stewardess dollars, uh, in, in the economy. Tax sharing agreements are also another attractive tool which helps to have new service entry into your community, but also maybe helps pay for some of those utility infrastructure challenges. So if the project generates enough revenue, maybe a slice of that pie can actually be applied to help with some of those infrastructure needs. Enterprise and opportunity zone designation areas are sweet spots. So if projects are coming into those particular areas, I would highly encourage council and the mayor to keep their ears open of how that can be utilized, uh, into growing the base of economy. And then you do have some activation programming and these are creative outlets that, uh, may necessitate some rule and regulatory changes. So street closures for creating a promenade space for the community or mobility trails with experiences along the way. Um, cultural arts or pop-up markets will necessitate, maybe they don't apply to the zoning criteria, but they're a creative way to bring those economies in and work in that nature. So they may come forth to you uh, for a policy change regarding some of those things. Um, and then broadband connectivity is very, very significant on behalf of, uh, populating economic development initiatives. And, um, it's a superlative community trait, which has been documented through a lot of the resource and, and activities on that particular track, channel track. Um, it also is very, very keen to dense development with regards to a medical campus and/or a heavy industrial base. And those are two pivotal projects that economic development is very entrenched in. So if we can gain that amenity, it actually will pay for itself probably five times, uh, in the attractiveness of, of build out development. The last thing I'd like to share is some of the bolstering resources. So Economic Development Urban Renewal is a very nimble organization. We are usually about 1.2 people on average, serving a community. But we have to cater to a lot, a lot of things. So we actually have to lean on our compadres in the city. Um, and some I have listed to you, some of those key areas, development services, public works, utilities, urban renewal, um, community engagement, finance and parks are the top ones that are, are very, very critical to fruition economic development. Um, and so they may need to expand their staff just to handle some of the injection of what's coming from this channel side, if that makes sense. And with that, I'll leave you with the last snapshot, which is your economy anchors of our community. Um, and so I broke these down into several categories as well. So you have some well-established areas and those are your Mesa Ridge quadrant, as well as your South Academy Highlands. We don't have to go out there and advertise these. They are actively coming and knocking on our doors to develop uh, and bring in new service centers. So, but they're very different. Um, and I know South Academy is one of the ones that maybe has the rub against the road, uh, on why we did that. But there's actually really good reasons why the city did that. Um, it is actually an external commerce. So it brings you external dollars into your revenue coffers. It's not our community mostly spending dollars. It's outside the community and those new dollars are coming in, which is a very, a very attractive economic model. It is also a non-compete. And what I mean by that, South Academy Highlands does not compete with Mesa Ridge. South Academy Highlands does not compete with Old Town. The trade districts are very different and they are actually not overlapping. So it's a separate external economy that actually gives us a lot of benefit from that perspective. Um, your untapped potential markets are pretty vast. Um, so you have your opportunity zone and the North 85 corridor, uh, which I'll give you a placement, IHOP. If everybody knows what IHOP is, that's basically where your opportunity zone in North 85 is. It's actually a strong, uh, investment and traction area. And it actually has a larger population base. So again, looking back at trade definitionals, you have city, you have valley and you have military and that actually blossoms the potential of population headcounts that attracts development in that area. Old Town, again, where we're, are sitting tonight is a very, uh, historic, rich, uh, cultural allure placement for our community. It's very unique and very distinct. And it will actually cater to more the eclectic, small business, festivals, events, community hearth type of, uh, ambiance. Your gateway district is Exit 128, the very southern, uh, almost tip of our community. Um, and that has a lot of heavy or light industrial potential because of the correlation to Fort Carson and Gate 19's opening access. Then at the very southern point is Pike's Peak International Raceway. A lot of times that one just gets overlooked, but it actually has quite a bit of landmass to develop. It actually is a great traffic generator for Southern Colorado at large. And it is your tourism and your events niche. It is the niche that it is, and it's very, very attractive from an economy perspective. So where we look long-term, so we're going to look at focusing on that untapped potential, uh, in regards to project advocacy and hopefully servitude through a utilities perspective. Um, but then what's on the horizon and horizons, you know, 20 years out, it's going to be your Powers Boulevard extension. That will be the next artery to tap for economic input. So with that, I hope I was quick enough. Um, and if you have any questions, uh, I'm more than glad to address them. I don't want more help. I need my peers to have more help.
But at the same time,
It is. It's very significant.
Well, I was going to say, we have 50 minutes left before we have to close down. There's still John Lewis, Todd Evans again, Mr. Blinkenship, Ms. Huffman and Scott, plus our time and we need to keep moving. Um, so if we need to get up and go, because um, our papers are only public in right now and we have four that are, um, online. So, um, okay. So, but let's just, if, if it's okay, let's just keep plugging through. Okay. So who's next? Oh, Todd. And, and hold on real quick because Ms. Duncan said she couldn't hear. I don't know if it's me she couldn't hear because I was, I didn't. Okay. Yeah. Just a reminder that if you're on and speaking, then turn your mics on. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Mary, you ready? Are we still? We hold on. Okay. So moving into the public works side of things, as we look back at our current strategic plan and we, we look at ours that are in yellow right now. The, the pavement management study that will also include the curb and gutter side of things, that scope of work is being completed right now. And we appreciate your support on that. That scope will go out for an RFP this, in the month of April. So we should get going on that as soon as they turn that around in the summertime and then we can turn those to grain. As you all know, we're having two community meetings next week on the single hauler. So we will then, after those meetings, we will have a five-week period where the public will have an opportunity to come on and blog and those comments, and we will make sure that you receive those as well before we bring that back in front of you as well. So I want to make sure we address what we've got out there before we kind of move on. And what you're seeing right now is this is a draft of the map that's being completed as we speak in terms of our master transportation plan. So Yolanda, if you could go to the next one, please, just go down and the next map will be right below. So as you can see what they're doing and just to orient and everyone, you know where I-25 is. You can see Squirrel Creek, major intersection here. Kimberly just spoke about the Powers extension, which you can see in orange. The boxes are where planned intersections will be with that Powers interchange. And I, I believe I briefed last council, but we have had some, some engaged meetings with CDOT, which have, have been an entirely different, different atmosphere than, than we had gotten in prior years in that they now want to get back engaged with that project. Of course, they haven't said there's money out there for that project, but theoretically they want to get back engaged with that project with us. So we're happy to hear that. So as you'll see, even though we've, we've got all of our developments on hold, our master transportation plan is going to still address what the future transportation system for the city will be. So they not only looked at any way we could improve the internal transportation system within the city, inner city itself, Old Fountain per se, but also as we continue out east, and this could be a plan that could be in place for 30 to 40 years. So you can see they have coordinated with, and go down to the next one, Yolanda. But they've also coordinated with the county as well as the city who are in process of updating their master transportation plans as well. Go down one more, Yolanda. So what that will be is our master transportation plan will show the long-term connectors out east in the county and as well up north. Wilson will be in front of you as a council next month to go through this as part of their community engagement process of the entire master transportation plan. So I didn't want to get into any more specifics other than our priorities that you will see on our strategic plan are going to be as we move forward and setting that strategic plan. That's going to be for us to continue to look at how we can finish the Moving Fountain Forward projects. Indiana, we do believe that we've got the budget to move forward with the Indiana project. And as we do that, that will open up basically an entirely new corridor for the southern end of the city. So that's extremely important for us. We are looking at this year to begin the engineering process for a span wire light at Jimmy Camp in Ohio, which will improve things in the school administration area and the high school area as the high school is moving forward with a new gymnasium over there, which, which can seat up to 4,000 people. So that's a game changer in that area, which will burden that intersection, so we look forward to improving that. We also believe we have, and CDOT was, was motivated to help us get some improvements down in the Carson area. So because of the Southmore closing, helped those folks get in and out of the Carson neighborhood better. Not with a, a new traffic light, but with some green tea and some different designs to help people get in and out of that intersection safer and quicker for them. So we're really going to look at, we've also got some conceptual ideas for Comanche and US 8587. We haven't had those discussions with CDOT yet, so I don't want to put that out into the public. But that's where you'll see our strategic priorities move to for this next strategic plan is to continue to finish those Moving Fountain Forward projects. Now, something that we just got notified about, oh, yesterday I guess it was, is that Brandy, through her work with PPACG, has been successful in getting our, our project for the reconstruction of Link Road from Kane South all the way to Old Pueblo on the PPACG list. That doesn't guarantee that we are going to get that grant, but now we are in, in play to get that. So it's time for us to sit down and look at, can we match that, that grant? To give you an idea, that project, when it was specked out in 2018, when we applied for that grant, had a cost of right about nine and a half million dollars. So we know since that was two years ago, we know it's over 10 million now. Don't know exactly where that will be, but, but construction prices have just gone up. So at nine and a half million dollars, our match was, was about, right about 1.7, wasn't it Scott? Right about 1.7 million. So when we have these community meetings and folks say, well, we can fix our road through grants, they don't understand the grants come at a cost as well. So the plan had been if the initiative passed a couple of Novembers ago, we were going to utilize that for our match and we'd be able to do those big projects. So we'll be bringing that information forward to you, not for a vote on yes, we can secure that money, but just to give you an idea of what the direction we're looking at going and see if we get your support on moving forward with those type of things. Because that's something, the construction of that probably wouldn't be done until 2025 or 2026, but they would start the engineering process in 2023, 2024 to do that. So we will have to, as a city, if we want to try to take advantage of that type of grant, we will eventually have to commit to those monies in 2023 when we will understand if we're on the list to get it done in future years. Does that make sense to everybody? If we pass that opportunity, then we've turned down about $8 million to redo one of our main thoroughfares that we will never get back. So we're going to do everything, Scott and I started brainstorming today with Brandy and we're going to do everything we can to move forward. That's tough to put on a strategic plan because we won't control that, that grant being awarded and a lot of those different things. But we can tell you that it will be one of our biggest priorities in public works to work through that and take advantage of that, that type of funding. So those are just some of the big projects that we're looking at in public works along with supporting anything utilities needs in their strategic plan areas as well. But does anybody have any questions on that, Sharon? Don't know. Don't know the specifics yet. From, from the initial documentation that Brandy shared with us today would be purely cash. If in the future, if it can be, don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Any other questions?
So Todd, so does the, and this answer may be obvious, but I'll state it anyways that, you know, what is your assessment on transportation infrastructure when you look at the development situation? Is, is the transportation infrastructure keeping pace with the development that we'd see in the 5, 10, 15?
So we can tell you the plan and what we saw earlier on that development map. We have instituted the philosophy that basically we won't support that development in terms of the transportation network. They are going to have to support us and they're going to have to build that. So that's been a lot of the ins and outs and that's why some of these take so long. Indiana is a good example. As we were negotiating and dealing with development companies down south, originally they told us, no, we were not going to, to put anything to that new intersection in the railroad crossing. Well, what did that take Scott? Three years? Three years of back and forth, back and forth until ultimately we, we continued to hold our line and say, no, you will, you will pay your way. And ultimately they did that. So those are the type of examples that we were continuing and we will be continuing to use, whether it be out east, whether it be an infill project or anything else, we'll make sure that they pay their way. A good example is, and this is something that you should hear, the Watermark Apartments that you approved the rezoning of a few councils ago. We were on the phone with them yesterday and they have offered to pay for a new intersection at Metropolitan and Mesa Ridge. She flat out came out and said, you can tell CDOT, we will pay for a lighted intersection there if they will approve it. Well, the problem is CDOT doesn't want another one there. So I'm going to be working with them on that, but how often do you hear them come right out and say, rather than us having to force them, that they will do something like that? So when Kimberly, you know, used that terminology, she's right. The developers have had to get used to and they haven't liked, then we're going to make sure they continue to pay their way. So when we look at that master transportation plan, everything that we see in that transportation network, it'll be presented to you in April. That funding isn't going to come initially from the city, that's going to come from the developers to build that out or they won't be developing. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you all.
All right, Dan. All right. Thank you. Good evening. And I actually have three areas that I wanted to address this evening, electric, water and tech services. But given the time that we have in the interest in water, I think I'm just going to address the, the water item this evening. In your packet that you have in front of you, you, you should have the document that I prepared and so you can take a look at the electric and, and tech services items and let me know if you have any questions or, or concerns. With regard to the, the, the water situation, you know, our, our primary obligation, and I think this is consistent with what you're hearing tonight with other aspects of the infrastructure and, and services that we provide as a community, is that our primary obligation is to our current ratepayers, our current citizens, you know, especially on the water side and the electric side, they've paid for the system. So they should have the right to receive full benefit of that system. And as it stands today, our, our existing water delivery system is, is more than adequate to meet the needs of our, our existing customers. And we're not going to do anything that would create inadequacies that would adversely impact those, those current customers. And so as we had this big rush of, of development applications or interest in the past, past couple of months, it's put us in a position where we had to start asking questions of ourselves because while they were being asked of us from the, from the development community is, you know, how, how can we get service? And, and the first thing that we started looking at was the infrastructure and that, that's the, when I say the infrastructure, I mean the pipes. And that was pretty, that was pretty obvious. In a lot of these development areas, there are no pipes in the ground. And so we started to evaluate what, what would be needed from a pipe perspective. But then we also, the, the, the question came up as well. If we put these pipes in the ground, do we really have the water to put in, into those pipes? And as we asked ourselves those questions and we, we, we found out that we didn't have that answer. So the, the issue here, to me at least, is, is it's not that we don't have capacity, available capacity. It's more the issue is not having, not knowing, you know, what that available capacity is. And so once, once we realized that we, we had, we really didn't know exactly how much. I mean, there was some, in the past, there's been some kind of, I guess anecdotal or informal, non-scientific type approach to determining, you know, do we have capacity to serve development? But what I learned was we had never really done a quantitative analysis to determine how many, how many, how much water do we have or capacity to serve, serve new taps? And I just, I, I just knew there felt that, that's something that we needed to know as we met with developers and as we, as we approved taps, so that we could go back to, you know, make sure that we're not creating an adverse impact to our, our existing ratepayers and, and, and their system. And so we, we've been telling developers, we immediately started taking action on that. We started to do a quantitative analysis. We, we did that in-house and we started in-house and then now we've taken it to a consultant to make sure that, you know, they're, they're going to get an in-depth look at this. And, and we, we really kind of, we looked at our entire system. When I say our entire system, I'm, I'm saying, starting with, with water rights, raw water storage, Pueblo Reservoir, our raw water conveyance system. And, and I think if you recall from the, the, the letter to the customers that I did about a month ago, it gave a real good overview of our system. And so we rely heavily upon the Fountain Valley Authority for raw water conveyance, treatment of that raw water and then conveyance of the treated water into, into our system. So we're delivering treated water to, to the taps. So that was the starting point was, was the tap. And, and I wanted to be able to determine what was the single most constraining factor or, or aspect of our delivery system. And so that, that was, we started with the, the treated water aspect of it. And that's where we came to understand that our, really our, our most constricting point is our ability to deliver treated water. And it's not only we have a contractual contract for purchasing this, this water treatment and delivery, but we also have physical constraints. And so we're probably about a week or so out from getting the first cut on, on the analysis, on the quantitative analysis to tell us how much, you know, how much capacity do we have available? Treated water capacity do we have available? And what does that equate to into the number of taps? And, and then concurrently, what we're doing is, is we're, we're looking at some potential short-term solutions to add capacity. And then we've also started the preparation of a comprehensive water system master plan. And what the master plan will do, among other things, it will identify long-term needs and, and solutions to meet those needs from the source all the way to, to the tap. It'll address the financial policies and practices that will enable us as managers of the utility to effectively manage the financial aspects of the, the, the water system and ensure its sustainability. And it also address our operation and operations and will identify operational policies, practices and programs that are necessary to ensure the effective and efficient operation and functional sustainability of the water systems. As we, as we look to the future, just beyond creating capacity at this point now, at this point in time or on a short term, we, we looked at our, our alternatives that are out there and there's not a lot of alternatives out there. The, the Fountain Valley Authority that we rely upon heavily is at full capacity. And so the, the other big opportunity that was obvious is this Southern Delivery System, which we were original partner in. And so we've met with Colorado Springs Utilities to discuss the potential of acquiring additional capacity in the Southern Delivery System. And we've been told that, that yes, that that potential exists. And Colorado Springs Utilities has initiated some investigation or looking into seeing what, how much capacity might be available and what the, what the cost of that capacity is. So not only are we trying to figure out what, what to do on the short term, but we're initiating action to see how we can address these issues going into the future. That I think one of the things that is really important is that to, to state is that our existing ratepayers will not be burdened with financing or paying for system extensions and additional capacity that's needed to serve development. This approach is, is kind of divergent from what we've done in the past. In the past, the water utility has traditionally gone out and, and purchased water rights, gone out and purchased capacity, built infrastructure and then the, that capacity or that infrastructure has sat there and it gets repaid by development through connection fees. And so we've essentially been, been the bank. And I don't, we're, we've, we've, we've kind of mortgaged to the max. And so what the, I'm taking more of an approach in the water utility, it's similar to what we do have done traditionally in electric. And that's having the developers come in and be responsible for building infrastructure and possibly even bringing capacity, additional capacity to, to meet their needs. And then, and they would then upfront the cost of those, essentially finance that. And then as they develop, we would utilize the connection fees to, to reimburse them for our costs. So, so our, our ratepayers, the city will not, would not continue to have to have the resources to, to upfront, upfront those costs. And so we're, we're actually started that process with Challenger on Ventana South. There's some significant offsite improvements that are required there. Water, water, a water main. Water, water, a water main, a 36-inch water main. And so we're in the process of negotiating agreement with them that they would go out and they would build those offsite improvements. And then once, once it's been installed and accepted and put into service, then they could start building and start making connections. And as they made connections to that, to that, they would be required to pay the connection fees and the infrastructure portion of that, we would use to either, we would either rebate that to them or reduce those so that they wouldn't be paying those up until the point that they actually got reimbursed. Because that was the, the purpose of the infrastructure component of our connection fees is to essentially do that, to build the offsite. But like I said, in the past, the developers have come in and then the city's taken on that responsibility. And so we, we've changed, we've changed that approach so that we're not burdening ourselves or, or our ratepayers to finance that. With that change, with that change in approach, there's, you know, I've, I've really evaluated, you know, our financial situation. And, and, and I have no plans to increase or make any recommendations to increase water rates unless we, unless we get into a situation where we have necessity to comply with future regulatory requirements. Otherwise, we're meeting our operational revenue requirements through reduction of expenditures and increasing operational efficiencies. So I really feel like our water rates, we're, we're really at the ceiling. We're maxed out on our, our ability to mortgage things. And we just need to take a little bit more conservative approach to, to manage the finances of the utility and shifting that responsibility to the developers for financing and building the infrastructure and building, bringing the resources that are needed, the water capacity, the treated water to us for development will, will enable us to, to get there. Now I'll take a breath.
It is a lot. And I think, again, it's, it's, you watch these things evolve, you know, at social media, which is just a, it's a, it's, I always said it's going to be the downfall of our society, social media. But all of a sudden, you have a lot of citizens in Colorado Springs who are water experts. And, but they've been watching what's going on and they see how council up there is allowing development and there's really no water to support it. And, but they're realizing, wait, that's going to be put on our shoulders to figure out for these developments that are, that they're just throwing in. And I think it's, it's prudent to, to look at it that way and, and figure out. I mean, what was Larry Patterson's old saying about water and gold? And, but, you know, it was, it's, it's more, more valuable than gold here in the West. And so we need to protect that.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I, you know, I know CSU will work with us and they're going to, they're going to try. And I, I would like to see with however those calculations were that, that brought us down in our peaks or whatever, if, if, is there a way to relook at those for the future? Because that seems kind of silly and we knew this entire region's going to grow, that they would back us down just because we've had a, or whatever. So I don't know if that's something that's in the discussions as well, but you may want to, if you can look at that, I don't know if that's something we can.
Absolutely. We're, we're looking at every, every, we're looking at it from every direction and every aspect that, that we possibly can. Not only, like I say, from our contractual, from a contractual perspective, what do we have capacity wise, also from a structural perspective, what do we have? And so we're, we're confirming all of that. And that's why it's taking a little bit of time. We've been at this probably for a good four to five weeks, but we've also been all hands on deck trying to get this identified. Like I say, the issue really isn't not having the capacity. The issue is not knowing what that capacity is and not knowing how we're going to meet future needs. On the electric side, we completed a distribution system study in July of last year. And that identified, you know, where, where are the needs and how are we going to meet them? So that when development comes to the table, we can immediately tell them, this is, this is the situation with, with electric. This is where we have facilities, this, excuse me, this is where the new facilities need to be built. This is your responsibility to, you know, build this new facilities or build these new facilities. And if there's others that benefit from that, we will, we will use the connection fees to reimburse your costs that you've incurred to the benefit of others. So, so we've done that on the electric side really well. It just didn't quite make it there on, on the water side. And that's what our master plan, we're, the, the things that we're doing right now, the evaluations, we're, we're figuring out what is our capacity. We're having a new water model made for, for our system. Because I understand our existing model is maybe 15 years old or older and it's really impossible to calibrate or it isn't accurate. So we're doing some things in advance of our master planning, but we've also kind of mashing the gas on the master plan because we think it's really important to get that done and get that in front of you all, this council who's been dealing, dealing with these issues. And so we're, we're targeting to have the master plan ready for approval no later than October of, of this year.
Great. One question I, that has come up is, are we looking at water restrictions this summer? I think I can say safely that at the very least, it would be voluntary. It really depends on how much water we have currently in our system. And I, yeah, I mean, but that's, it's still kind of too early to.
That's, well, no, I can, I can speak pretty confidently about that. We have an adequate system. We have an adequate delivery system from water rights to, to our existing taps. The system that our customers have, our ratepayers have paid for and are using is, is absolutely adequate to meet their needs through the summer, even with some drought conditions. We have storage in Pueblo Reservoir.
More where my, where my comments led to is not that we don't have water, it's just in storage, do we have enough to, to last us through the heat of the summer? And typically we do. And when we do restrictions, it's more about voluntary, just to, to help us along. But we've not had to do real restrictions like they do in the springs.
No, I do not anticipate that we would have to have mandatory restrictions. And once again, that's because of our approach to look out for our ratepayers' best interest and not overextend ourselves. It would be very easy to overextend ourselves when these guys are coming in and wanting to do all this development to just start dishing taps out. But that's going to be the result is then, once we start stretching that capacity is, when we get to the peak time, that's where you're going to notice it. And that's when, you know, I didn't want to be in the situation a year, two years, three years down the road, and all of a sudden, we have to go to mandatory restrictions because we've given the capacity or we've, we've allowed that capacity to go away by, by tap, by making new, new taps. So we will be coming back in front of the council at the end of April, the second meeting in April, with a presentation on our conservation program. And we do have a conservation, a water conservation plan that's been in place for a number of years. And the first step of that is just voluntary, voluntary use or reduction of, of water. And that's, and that just automatically occurs. We just ask our customers to, to voluntarily conserve.
And they've usually risen challenge and have done it.
You bet.
And we've had good results with it. So, okay. Any other questions for Dan on this issue? It's, I'm glad we're having to deal with it now and not, you know, and, yeah, in a worse time, so.
Yeah, I remember you had mentioned to me that a couple of weeks ago that you did have a meeting with someone on the broadband issue. And I was just wondering if that was moving forward or if that died there or what happened?
No, we're, we're still moving forward. In fact, the, the CEO and the founder of the broadband company that we're working with is in town today and tomorrow. And if any of the council members would like to meet the individual and have some, some conversations with them, let me know, I can arrange something for tomorrow. But we are moving forward. They're very close to providing us with a, a proposal. And it's, it looks very promising. And so that, that is moving, moving forward. Like I say, if you're interested, let me know and I'll get something set up for you tomorrow. And I anticipate that we will have a proposal to probably visit with you about maybe the second meeting in, in April, in a, in an executive session.
I was just curious because Ms. Bailey mentioned that it's really vital to business and her, her little stuff that she's doing, to have something like that to talk about. So.
Yeah, absolutely. And like I say, it's, it's, it's very, it looks very promising. It's, it's very, it's high speed. It's, it just, and the, the great thing, at least with the indication that this, this company is, is, is telling us right now, is they're not looking for any subsidies from the city. And that was, that was really the issue, the, the last group that we were talking with, once we kind of got down to the bottom line, they were, they were looking for a significant subsidy from the city. And, and so this group is, is getting creative on how they're going to deploy the system. And so that's enabling them to be able to do that on their own dime and still pay for, you know, pay for permits, pay for leasing of city facilities, pole attachments, doing things that anybody else who came into town to do business would have to do. Yeah, standing on their own.
My question is about the water and, and how we're intermingled with whitefield water. And whenever you're doing your study here now, are you going to figure out a way where, like their capacity, we're borrowing from them, they're borrowing from us? And I'm, I'm concerned about that as far as a fountain council person. And I have whitefield water and I want to make sure I got water, but.
Right. We are doing all of our analysis based on firm commitments. So we have, we have contracts for firm delivery. We're not counting on a trade. We're not counting on a source that is interruptible. We're only, in our calculations, we're only counting on things that are firm guaranteed delivery. Yeah. So, so, yeah, we're not, we're not going to, we're not betting on the come, so to speak. We're, we're, we want to make sure we're ensuring a guaranteed deal.
I just really appreciate the fact that the way that all the departments are overlapping at looking all this, I think it's just really vital because as a business person, one of the things that's most frustrating is when Carl's department tells you one thing and your department tells you another thing and your department tells you another thing. If we're going to, you know, if they just know what all the expenses are potentially upfront coming in, then they can build that into the price of the product that they want to sell. And they can decide on themselves whether it's worth their time to build that product here or bring that product here. So I just really, really appreciate the fact that you guys work so closely together. You know, you could say in the words of a famous patriot, we all hang together, right?
Right.
But I think that's really true in this case because it just is very frustrating, you know, to be told one thing and then another. So by working together, having the data to back it up, having, you know, the rationale behind it, and the police department even being involved, you know, hey, every so many people that come in require this, you know, another officer, another fireman, another piece of equipment, the more data we can get people up, up front to support our, our position on this, the greater respect you have in the community because they just don't think you're making up numbers. And then though, I, I hopefully think we're all going to squeal about when things cost more. But if you can, you know, should, take it back to your board of directors and show them, this is why we're going to have to sell our product or bring our product to this area for this amount of money. And that's just the way it is, then it's, it becomes their choice. But it also is upfront. So we're not changing, they're not, they haven't set their prices and come down here and start to build. And then all of a sudden, something changes at the last minute. So I just think that's really important. And I think we've put some other things as part of this process, you know, whether they can have the reduced lot size, they can have the zero escaping in the yards, I think all that kind of stuff is going to come into play with, with some of this too. So I just really, I just want to say thank you very much for, you know, Kimber said that she's 1.2 people, but heavily depends on you guys. And, and I think it really shows when everybody's working, working together.
I can, I can tell you as probably the newbie to the team that, yeah, there's a, there's a great spirit of teamwork here. And this man is, is the clue to that, especially when it comes to the development side. Him, he and Christie do a fantastic job of communicating and coordinating with all, all of the departments. Yeah, even, yep, yep. Yeah, we, we roll up our sleeves together and get to work.
Dan, as a new guy, you just need to know, we try to limit our comment, our great comments to Todd because.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah. No, no. Okay. I'm not seeing if Ms. Dietrich or Ms. Tamra have any questions at this point. So who's next? Okay, Sylvia. Yes.
I am. And for the sake of time, my report will be very brief.
Okay.
But I did want to go ahead and start off where Sharon was speaking about the cohesive atmosphere that we have here in the city. It's really been helpful that we've all been able to communicate when we come across these hurdles to make sure that we're not over-promising and under-delivering. But to that point, on the objectives that we have here for the strategic plan, as you know, we did put a hold on the committees giving updates to city council because we didn't have the committee since COVID. So we thought we'd regroup and see what that looked like. At the retreat, we did speak about possibly having negotiations and talks with developers about maybe utilizing some of their property as they come into the city and being able to give park credits or just negotiate that property as we did with some of the public safety parcels. With that, as you know, if, if development is put on hold, even if it is just temporary, that kind of means the negotiations from parks and recreation has to be put on hold as well. I don't anticipate that this is going to be a forever thing. I think that we're pretty lucky that the YMCA still anticipates opening in June so that our residents will still have some place to, to have activities and fun with their families. But in the interim, we do have to just kind of hold off and find out what the water situation looks like, what development looks like, because we were kind of hanging our hat on that when we knew that we couldn't. And it was a blessing in disguise that we couldn't build that wreck facility because as Councilmember Thompson said, that it might just be sitting there and nobody utilizing it. And so same thing might happen if we start building these facilities or, you know, if we have developers come in, we may not have the water to have an indoor swimming pool, for example. So we're going to play it by ear, but we're still, I mean, it is still on the forefront. And hopefully I'll get something accomplished before I retire from the city. But the last bullet that we have there has to do with the skate park at Metcalf. That was a discussion that was held at the retreat. And fortunately, city council had voted to approve funding for the start of that project. We do have the contractor getting ready to deploy any day now. So they're purchasing and preparing the equipment to go into the skate park. We are concurrently running with the phase one of the Metcalf Park upgrade to include the parking along Ohio Road to be expanded to include ADA parking. So I did want city council and public to know that we are not just sitting idle. We're making sure that the facilities that we do have are being upgraded. We're working in conjunction with our conservation department and trying to do our part for this water and working with, like I said, Katie Helms and Conservation to put in water-wise irrigation. And she's found some funding through a grant. So she's helping us apply for that. So anywhere we can save money, not only on the install of new irrigation and sprinkler heads, but to save money on the cost of water that we're putting out there is going to help the entire community. So as I said, just in closing, it's, it's, it's a little limited on my report, but I don't think that anybody should think that parks and recreation is stagnant by any means. So you guys have any questions for me? That's all I got.
Thank you. And you've completed a lot of things up until now. You don't have to worry about retirement. But, no, I mean, I mean, you think about when this current council first started eight years ago, almost, we had a baseball association that was in town and that was really it. And look where we are today. And, you know, there, there's so much to be said about the recreation that is available to not just kids. We have adult softball leagues, we have dodgeball, we have kickball. I mean, those fun things that, that adults can take part in. So those are things that, that weren't around prior to that. So with your leadership, we've really taken off. And so I appreciate, I'm sure I speak for everybody, but we do appreciate everything you guys are doing, so.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Ms. Sylvia. All right, John.
Okay. For those, uh, listening in, this is John Lewis, uh, finance director. I've listened to the department presentations and, uh, certainly acknowledge that we will do everything in our power to, uh, to help them with their goals and support their priorities. Um, you, you can see from the needs out there that, you know, we have to be pretty creative in, uh, in doing that. Uh, I have two other quick points. One is, as you know, on March 11th, they approved the American Rescue Plan. Some money will be coming to us from Coward Springs. Sean and I sat through a, a class to determine how that money is going to be spent. And we didn't walk away with too many details because the details really aren't out there. It's going to be submitted by the treasury department, uh, just prior to when the funds are dispersed. The funds will be dispersed within 60 days after that March 11th date. That puts us probably around early May. Uh, what we do know is that, uh, it's to help support, uh, frontline emergency, um, staff. It's supposed to take care of, uh, lost revenue. That's a big question mark for us because we lost revenue on, let's say, traffic fines during COVID. But we more than made up for that in some of the sales tax from people ordering things at home. So we didn't have some of the leakage that we've had be in the past to, you know, the malls in Coward Springs in Denver, for example. Uh, software, technology, solutions, et cetera. So, and, and also a big one, water, sewer and broadband. So, so if we, or as soon as we get some more of those details, we'll share them with you. Uh, of course it's intergovernmental revenue. So as you know, it is Tabor exempt, which brings me to my third point. Been watching very carefully our Tabor spending limits. And, um, you know, we have, we have three things that, that I'm concerned about. One is that our sales tax revenue is increasing, uh, rapidly. Uh, we had a 14% increase last year, which certainly helped with some of the lost revenues in areas. But, um, our tax exempt sales tax revenue that Kimberly referred to earlier, like at South Academy Highlands and where we've done economic, economic incentives, uh, for those businesses, those sales taxes are exempt. Well, uh, the exempt sales tax is growing at about an eight percent level. Uh, the others are growing at 14. So, so eventually that runs us up against the Tabor spending limit. Secondly, we, um, uh, they, they recalled the Gallagher Amendment. So, uh, as you know, the assessment rate is now going to be fixed, but it won't decrease, uh, as it had in the past. So whatever amount is assessed, uh, our mill levy against that assessed value, um, will be the revenue that we receive. And I spoke, uh, just recently to, uh, the El Paso County Assessor's Office. And they're seeing, uh, values, uh, increasing to the extent of double digits, meaning, you know, 10%, 15%. And if that holds out, then theoretically, uh, our revenue, since they're not decreasing the assessment rate now, uh, our revenues would, would increase there. So I think concern we have is that eventually we could see a refund situation. In which case, you know, you know, you as council in 2022 will kind of be in a decision point as to how we handle that refund situation. That's all I had.
Oh, okay. Let me check on questions.
The ballot question for Tabor would be, do you want to refund it? Or there could be a large project, we could ask them to keep the money for, right?
That's correct.
Some large infrastructure need is what my brain is going to some project that didn't, you know, we didn't have funding for. It would be one time. Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, wait. At the rate we're going, it may just be to put the water in the pool, right?
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions, John. Thanks.
Thank you.
Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to use my, uh, comments just to wrap up here. Um, I, I think it's been great that we've been able to hear from the different departments on some of the needs and some of the things that they're looking at, some of the forecasts that they have. From my standpoint, when we were several months ago, looking at, okay, starting up this strategic planning process and looking at some of the, the growth that was going to hit us. And now that picture may have changed slightly, but we know long-term, that's a, that's a temporary change. Long-term is going to continue. And so from our standpoint, I think one of the things that we're going to really take a hard look at, um, with each of the departments, with, with each, we cheat with each of the service providing departments, um, to the community. I think we're going to look at some planning over a three, five, 10-year window to get a sense of what do the impacts? What, number one, what are our growth projections look like? What are different scenarios of growth projections? Cause it really is just a little bit of a crystal ball activity. But then what do our services look like? Whether it's police, fire, EMTs, uh, internal staff dealing with development, utilities, I know Dan's talked a lot about utilities and that, and our projections on how do we provide the services? What does that growth create for us? So I think one of our major tasks is probably gonna, i- in fact, in a way, it's, it's probably a good thing that there's a little bit of a pause on some of this growth because it's going to allow us to really take a deeper dive in some of these other departments that don't typically have the time to really look at, or maybe just don't, just because of the nature of what they do. Obviously, when you get to electricity and water, that's something that if you don't have it, you don't serve as somebody. So that's something that you're generally right up on. But when you're dealing with police, a lot of times it's a little bit fuzzier because we know that you can stretch it a little bit. I mean, you know, you don't have those hard stops like you do with utilities. But I think it's still, it would behoove us to go and start looking at what those growth projections, what does modeling look like? Whether it's parks and rec or any of these other areas. So I think from our standpoint, I think that would be something that would be very needed. Those are things we see a lot with, again, within utilities, but, um, pretty much in it, on virtually every level of the organization. I think it's, this is a good opportunity for us to take a breather and move forward with that. So with that, um, I don't have any other comments on, uh, you know, as far as wrapping things up, but other than just to turn it back to the council. Um, I know, I know, Mayor, you've checked on public comments throughout, but I know we have a little bit of time now. So to decide if there are any other public comments as well.
Okay. Yeah. I was just looking, I, we will have a couple of public that are still sticking with us at this point. And so not seeing any questions come up. And if they do, I'll, I'll address them as they, they pop up. And then the review of council issues and ideas. So John, you want to kind of explain on what, what the intent is on that?
Sure, Mary. Yeah. The intent here, this, this portion is that we give the opportunity for council members to bring up any, you know, issues, questions or challenges, um, that we haven't covered this evening. Something that, um, you know, that's been on your mind or you think is an issue that's emerging in the community that we should add to this review and that we should look at to help us, you know, and inform our strategic planning process. So that's why we allocated some time to doing that. So, um, I do have one actually alibi, um, item on here for the matter of review, just to briefly talk about our military partnerships. And so that is one of our enduring interests is to include, um, our military here in the community. And it's my assessment, we have a, um, a very strong relationship with our military partners, particularly with Fort Carson. But in, in recent years, and, and we continue to share, um, a lot of involvement with the Military Affairs Council, uh, which is, you know, the regional, uh, group that gets together with all of the five military installations. We enjoy, uh, one, um, intergovernmental support agreement right now with Fort Carson. We're on the verge of, uh, getting approval for a second, much, much larger, very cutting edge ICSA, um, with Fort Carson. So we have a reputation now in the region, um, as being a real leader on IXAs. The PPACG is interested in doing a regional ICSA with the air force, and we are absolutely at the table with that as well. So just wanted to provide you a little bit of, of information about that too. And that, you know, as we're surrounded by military installations, I think our fountain's partnership with the military is, is stronger than it's been.
Okay. So, um, if council has any issues or concerns that haven't been brought up or are not a part of our strategic priority, because there are opportunities to either, I don't know if we add a shift, but we could combine some and, cause you know.
This is Councilwoman Duncan. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Are you ready for us to speak or?
I was just in the middle of something. I'll, I'll, I'll call on you real quick.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. Um, and so, yeah, if there's, there's, there's opportunities for us to, to squeeze things into certain ones. And that, that's what we'll be doing in the next couple of meetings as well. And, um, so if there's something that, you know, hey, I really think this needs to be a priority of ours, um, bring it up now. And, and if we don't get to it tonight, I mean, this isn't ending tonight. Um, it's an opportunity to sit down with, with John and, um, in the future and be able to come up with some ideas of things that, that you may have that, that, uh, maybe we need to be looking at as a city as well. So Ms. Duncan, since you're, uh, mic's on, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? I'm having connection problems.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Okay. I just want to, uh, echo some of the comments from Sharon about the corporate, corporation and collaboration among the staff that's there. Uh, we have a really good staff and it doesn't just come by words. It comes by, uh, showing of the actions and how they treat each other at work and how they collaborate with each other. And one department is talking to another. And it's very apparent when we have meetings. I also would like to say that I have completed, uh, an online class with, uh, Cornell University on diversity and inclusion. And I'd like for us to add that to our strategic plan and come up with some things that we can do in the city. I'd like to share some of the things that I have learned. So, um, I don't know how we go about doing that. Of course I'm new. So, uh, if I would just like to bring some, uh, really good ideas that we could have for our city. And if you can just let me know how we could get that started, I'd like to start doing that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a really great idea. I think, um, really, uh, set some time aside to, to possibly talk with Scott as well. He's been very, um, heavily involved with trying to figure out how do we manage that? And, 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 you know, to be on the forefront of, of our thinking and that. So, um, any insights that you might bring as well from your, um, Cornell, uh, stuff and things like that would, I think would actually lend, um, some help to him as well and, and running the organization of the city. And then outside of that, I think is also what you're talking about as well. So I think maybe kind of figure out how to meld the two and, and, uh, put that together, I think is a, you know, in this day and age, it's, that's definitely what we need to be doing. So I think that's a great idea. Okay. And I think she got kicked offline.
I went to a, a class. I accidentally somehow got on an invite list from the county commissioner, CCI. I received and they let me in and the lady did an entire, um, class on diversity and inclusion. And she was really, really good. And I believe she's local. If not, the whole class was on Zoom. And, um, I thought it, I didn't know what it was going to be going into it. And, um, I thought it was probably one of the most valuable seminars I've been to in a year. So, um, that would, I think she'd be a fantastic, um, you know, and being able to do it by Zoom every day could get in pretty easily. But she would do little breakout rooms and stuff. And yeah.
We, just, just so everyone's aware, we're actually members of GARE, which is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And they've got some incredible tools that are part of our membership package to help us do, uh, sell, to help us do assessments, the surveys. I mean, just a number of different things. So we've got some access to some great resources.
Okay. And Ms. Estes, her mic came on for a minute there and then it's off. So I'm actually going to see if she has anything she'd like to, oh, there's your mic.
I just want to read, uh, reiterate what everyone else is saying. Really appreciate all the staff working together. And I, I really thank utilities for standing strong and making sure that we're taking care of our resources. Because I know that, um, I want responsible growth and I don't want that to be on the backs of the citizens that are already here. Thank you.
All right. Thank, and I think, you know, really this council has, has lent it, not lent itself, but lend this, I don't know what's the right way to say this, have given the opportunity to staff to, to work in that way. And, um, they feel valued and they feel, um, as they are experts in their fields. And, and they feel like they can do the things that they need to do because they're not watching their backs and, and worried about the political part of, of, of city government. And, and, uh, this council has really made sure that that, um, has been available to them. And, and, uh, we, we've lived through the years where you, you didn't know which way to walk down the hallway because you didn't, um, want to, uh, make the wrong person upset and you don't know what the fallout was going to be. So, you know, you, this council is, again, I keep going back to this council, but we've done a really good job of, of putting everything aside and, and knowing what our job's about. So I, I do appreciate that, that of everybody. And, um, and the experts that we have working, you know, in the city and, and doing the things that you do, um, make our job 10 times easier. So I appreciate it. And I, I know I speak for everybody else, but, um, you know, things like this strategic plan to keep moving forward with. You know, we've done them before. I've been a part of a couple others and we never touched them again. They came up and we did this, all these activities and they went away. But this has been a truly breathing and living document. So, um, I think everybody on that, with that, I think we are a little over time, but, um, is there anything else, John, Scott?
Just want to make sure it's not on our radar. I don't know if it's, it needs to be a new dot or maybe a word in a dot. But, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, there, it's just a huge thing. We have to start looking at it in different areas. I've talked to Scott a little bit about it already. Um, but I think in some of our, just in, in your department, it has to just begin to be a discussion. Um, it doesn't have to be electric cars. I don't know what all it would, you know, I said to Scott, maybe we have to get battery operated leaf blowers. I just don't know. But there are going to be, we can't ignore it. There are going to be some, um, changes coming down from the state and possibly the federal. And we just need to, to be aware that we're keeping on top of those. And, you know, I don't know where it goes in the discussion, but it's just something we need to be. And I've been in on some of those conversations so far. A lot of the suggestions are, um, pretty broad. But could be potentially pretty expensive if you're not at the table.
Okay. Um, Ms. Duncan, she lost connection. She sent me a text. She lost connection. So I said, did you have anything further? And she lost it again. So, um, uh, so if you can, John, maybe tomorrow, just following up with, uh, Ms. Deeter and/or Ms. Tamara as well, just to see, um, since they weren't able to be here. If there's anything that we may have missed that they want to include as well. And, um, and we can go from there. So, um, thank you all. It's been a long day. Thank you paper for coming. I know it's been a long day for you as well. So, um, I think that's it. Go ahead.
So that concludes the review. The next step will be the update phase, phase two, which will be the hard discussions about all of the things we discussed tonight. I got a full sheet here and I know that, uh, Scott's got some notes and we'll be comparing those. And, uh, and determining where we go with the strategic priorities. And that'll be in the August timeframe when we'll do that.
All right. And thank you to our one lone attendee who stayed on through the entire thing, Dr. Romero from the school district. So I'm glad they were here. Thank you. Okay. Uh, we are adjourned. We'll talk to you all later. Up the street from Scott or Chris?